We're missing one, we're missing Cecilia.
Okay.
So for the sake of record keeping, we'll call the meeting to order. I didn't ask Kathy, but I hope she's ready. And we'll take attendance by asking each of us to state our name. I can start, Matthew Weiss.
Lucinda Manning.
Amanda Curley.
Karen LaRocca Fells.
Alice Chaslow.
Althea Goodson.
Molly Robbins.
Donnie Spiller.
I think that's, everyone is accounted for. There are no members of the public here. And the first item on the agenda is old business, the water treatment taxable status. As you may recall at our meeting a week ago, we had a presentation from the village representatives and they expressed the importance of considering a resolution to exempt the water properties from the taxable properties for the local library taxes. The supporting documentation has been resent. And for the sake of initiating the discussion, I will say that I looked at it again. And it's, it's a very neat package. It indicates that there would be some benefit to some members of the village of Austin population to have these properties taken off the rolls. But I don't understand the context or the background story to all of this. And I'd like to open the floor to anyone who has any comments or means of enlightening the rest of us.
I have, Molly, oh, I'm sorry. I have quite a bit I'd like to share as I've been discussing it with others. And let me begin with, my recommendation is to maintain the status quo. And when I say maintain the status quo, I say follow as we have been doing with the current taxing, water taxing policy, as that is the way it has been for years. Now, in the current social and, you know, climate, when we have so many unknowns, why change our practices is the first question I ask. And if we exempt Austining from paying their taxes, which I understand is according to the chart, $6 million, right? These taxes don't disappear. They're not suddenly going to go away. Those taxes are going to have to be picked up by the residents.
Well, the taxes, you're right, the taxes won't disappear, but the, the funding for the water comes from usage. So you pay as you go. So.
But if I understand this correctly, not only will the town of, the residents of Austining be paying, but so will the residents of the other districts that contribute.
Right.
And so if we, if we change the way this is done now, and we set this as a precedent in 24, 25, with a new facility being built, the, the $76 million will be picked up by all of the residents in all the different towns that, and for the, for Austining's water treatment plant, that note that the, the Briar, I don't know about Briar Cliff, but I know that Newcastle and Yorktown will not be using.
Okay.
So I think it's a huge tax question that we're setting a precedent as the board to residents in all these different townships and districts to, to accept. And I'm, I'm not comfortable at all doing that. And there's the climate now. Do I want to ask people to pay more taxes, basically, even if it's coming out of the water fund? It is more taxes that goes to individual homeowners?
I just wanted to say that I noticed on one of the documents that, I guess, that's written where it said that they had spoken to two board members from the Board of Ed Education. And unlike what, how they came to us as a board meeting, they did not go to the Board of Ed as a board meeting because they specifically said they only spoke to two people. And two people is not a board meeting.
Yeah.
So once again, not sure why that happened that way, or why, you know, but it just doesn't strike me as being honest about what's going on, or why they, why they approached the, the library board that way.
The, the library board was notified by Maddie that this effort was underway. And I felt that it made sense to invite her to the board so we could have an opportunity to examine it in detail. Obviously, they're well prepared. They had the data that they wanted to present to us. And that's, we got what I call a dog and pony show. It was well prepared and all the bells and whistles. But again, I, I personally don't have the context of the background to know the implication of either or both of these options that we have. Cecilia, Lucinda, any questions?
I kind of feel that if we were asked to justify the rationale behind passing this, I don't know what we would say. I mean, I don't have the comfort of feeling anyone on this call feels like, ah, I got it. That's not good.
Right.
Well, I guess my opinion is that I wanted to see pros and cons for this. And basically, when they try to sell us something, they always just kind of state facts and then say, please pass this. But what Amanda said, I think is very convincing. What Shanti said is very convincing. I don't see the pros and cons either way, leading to a vote that, you know, like Cecilia says, is completely informed. Did Karen or did Matt, as president, have a chance to speak with anyone on the board? I'm sorry, a village trustee or Karen Dottori or Maddie anymore?
No, I had no intention of having a private conversation with them on this.
Well, it's just that this memo, which I, I'm assuming is what you said they sent out again. And I'm sorry if I missed something in our, you know, pile of documents. I went through them and I didn't see anything in addition to the memo. Was there something besides the memo?
It's all the same documents that you got back time from them.
Okay. And Karen, how do you feel about this? Because I mean, I feel like we need to be a tax specialist to be able to really weigh the pros and cons.
I feel like I have a, a very vague understanding of what they're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
But like has been said, especially by you Cecilia, I, I don't know that I could, you know, if a member of the public came up to me and said, why did the board ask this? I would have to say, on the recommendation of the village. You know, my, my understanding of it is the taxable status, the, what's, what's the word I want? The assessment of the water properties right now is as an undeveloped property. And the assessment would go much, much higher. And so then more taxes would have to be paid and they would have to make up that money in some way, most likely increasing the water bills for the water customers. But that's my very vague understanding.
Yeah, I, well, so I, I did have to speak with the village manager about the youth bureau. So I did speak with her about it. And my understanding is pretty much equivalent to Karen. And I agree, Cecilia, that I wouldn't be very comfortable explaining what I had voted on. Right?
Yeah.
And I know that I thought this had to be done by May 1st, but it does not have to be done by May 1st.
That's new information.
Yes. So I don't see the, I think that it is not explained in simple enough terms that any of us can say exactly what we're voting on. Right? And, and response to what you said, Amanda, my sense is that they feel there's going to be less of a financial burden by doing it this way than by not exempting it. But none of us know how to interpret the Excel sheet. The memo is not very well written or clear. And I think that there needs to be a much cleaner explanation of what we're doing. And they have not gone yet either to the town or the village. I'm sorry, or to the town or the schools. And they're in the process of doing that right now.
Any other comments or questions at this time?
Yeah. Do we have any understanding of the debate that the school board had on this? I mean, do they understand it better?
No, I don't think anyone really understands it. I think it's like, I don't know which one of you said, we, we almost need to be like tax attorneys to really understand what's going on here. Well, actually, I know an attorney who went online and read these documents because of our board. Oh, good. Okay. And his recommendation was continue as we have been. Don't make any changes. This is not the time to implement this kind of change. Now it's time to follow, to continue with the status quo as it is. And so.
Well, I felt Shanti made a really good point when she said that perhaps this will penalize the village residents more. And I find that over the years I've been in Austining over three decades, that that seems to be the case. In other words, the outlying areas who oftentimes have higher incomes and larger properties and own, get the benefit. And the village residents who have perhaps lower incomes and don't own and rent, I mean, if it's going to all come down to water usage, then it seems like it is sort of a penalty and isn't fairly shared. But I don't know if that perspective is backed up because I've read the memo several times. I've looked at the different scenarios. And I don't really understand the word scenario, because basically what I wanted was, what are the pros of doing this? And what are the cons? Who benefits? Who doesn't benefit? Is it the village government that benefits just by reallocating the money somewhere else? And who is penalized? I mean, is Shanti correct? Because I tend to think she probably is, you know, based on what some of the other decisions over the years have been made. And I don't want to penalize anyone, especially our residents who are, who have lower income and who don't have as many resources, especially at this time right now. So I didn't understand that Amanda had actually, you know, talked with or someone was present who is a tax attorney, but that is added information that's very useful.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I, I can't say I was advised. It was just.
Sure. Oh, sure. Sure. Yeah. But that's useful information because that's more than what the, the, anyone else has given us, in terms of tax implications, right?
And I had to do it because I couldn't understand what I, the information.
I know. Yeah.
Clearly.
I agree.
My understanding of the intent of this is so that people will not be disproportionately affected. If you do it as taxes versus water rates, water rates are where people gonna, are going to see tremendous increases in their bill. But I could not explain this to save my life. So I think that we need a better explanation. And my sense is that that's why they want to do this, is to mitigate exactly that type of impact, Shanti, that people would be disproportionately affected in terms of their water rates and stuff.
I mean, it seems like Maddie, Maddie actually said something to that effect, but I don't understand how that is real or true. And the fact right now that we learned tonight that May 1st is not a hard deadline for this, that upsets me. That upsets me that they, they've done this before where they've said, oh, you must, you must do this, you must vote, you must, must. And then, oh, well, it's really not a hard deadline. So why say that?
Well, I think it might be the end of May. I think it just may, and I may have misinterpreted. I don't know.
But still.
I'm going to make a suggestion. If there are no more comments or questions.
Table it again.
Yes, that would be my, my comfort level at this time would be to table it. If there are no objections, that's what we'll do. So we'll consider a table.
Is there any information or person or expertise that I could try to bring to the table to help people understand it, other than people from the village?
Do we have a tax attorney we could call on? Our own?
Well, I think we need someone who knows the process and the history inside and out. And that would be someone from the staff of the village, perhaps. But ultimately, I think what it comes down to, my impression was distinctly that they don't want to change the way they do business. So the easiest route for them would be to change the way that they tax the water properties and they, the way they charge people for the, the water usage. Yes, it's pay as you go, but they also set rates. And they don't want to change that formula, which is why they, they're going this route to have us accommodate them. So I'd be very comfortable in table on this until more information comes up. And Karen, I don't know who else there is, but if this is important enough to them, they'll find someone and approach us again, I think. That'll motivate them is what I'm saying. So we can move on to the resolution for this particular item, number 49. And officially, it's been tabled, the approval of the exemption from local library taxes for village owned water properties. The next item is new business. And the first of the two new business topics is the discussion of library reentry when pause, P A U S E, is modified or lifted. Karen and Molly, we have to rely on you to walk us through this and bring us up to date, if you please.
Sure. So we have started talking at the system level as far as the directors in Westchester County go, as well as the staff level, about what reentry is going to look like for our library. And it's, you know, part of the problem is there are so many unknowns. The timeline is not anything that one could say is a firm timeline, but we can make some plans. We have a committee of staff members who met for the first time on Wednesday, I think it was, of last week.
Yes.
And we sort of divvied up the areas of concern. And I can summarize those for you very briefly. I don't want to get too much into the weeds because you don't need to, you know, worry about the weeds too much. But we have a lot of concern about social distancing in our building, whether that's possible in the old ways that we did business. Just people being in our building, using our building is a lot of times, as you see, when you come to the building, people are sitting next to each other, up against each other, very close. And so how do we mitigate that? How do we, if the, if the governor comes down with orders that says, you know, only X number of people are allowed per square feet in a building, how on earth do we deal with that? So we're starting to talk about those things. Also, in terms of social distancing and protections, Molly has been working on putting together some logistical protections, like physical barriers and things like that. So I'm going to have you talk about that, Molly, with the, the build, you know, the, you know, those things.
Unfortunately, they're called sneeze guards, which is not a very nice name. There are, there are quite a few options available to us. They're, the good news is they're fairly affordable and fairly flexible. They have the disadvantage of actually setting up physical barriers between ourselves and our patrons, but that's our new reality. The six foot distancing is certainly something that presents a challenge for us. I've been all over the building measuring between computers, how much spacing there is when people sit at tables, desks. Is it enough to have the six foot barrier? Or, you know, do we need sort of a plexiglass divider across some of our larger tables and workstations? And it's not only just for our protection and patron to patron protection, but also what is going to give individual patrons a sense of security and comfort themselves? You know, what's going to make somebody feel like, I need to use the public telephone? Is it okay for me to use the public telephone? Do I know it's sanitized in between people? Do I know that the phone itself is, you know, in a sort of little protected booth? So like Karen was saying, we don't want to get too much into the weeds, but I did want you to know the kind of things we were thinking about. The good news is a lot of these plexi barriers are completely clear. So you can see people through them. I, it's my understanding that you can scan barcodes through them. I'd like to practice that myself to make sure that's true, because that will actually make things much easier for us in terms of the kind of things we install. The good news is anything we install can probably be dismantled if, you know, the good news is we don't have to do this anymore. We don't have to do it as much. There are, there are sanitizing and disinfecting types of equipment. We've borrowed some. There are other types available. We, it's, again, it's reasonably affordable. And it's the kind of thing that we could continue to use for flu season, for example. We can just institute a higher level of cleanliness for the things that people are touching on a regular basis. If they're keyboards, mice, the books, the audiobooks, things like that. So we have, we have a lot of options. It is material that has to be purchased. Luckily, I've found some suppliers, especially for the plexiglass, who are ready to go right now. When it comes to things like gloves, gloves seem to be the hardest thing to find. There are masks available, cloth masks, disposable masks. Those don't seem to have as long a waiting time. So, you know, those are things that we can purchase now and hang on to. And if we don't open again to the public until eight weeks, 12 weeks, it's not like those things are going to go bad. In terms of staffing and spacing for our staff, if we're allowed to say, have 50% of our staff in the building working, we will be able to space people in a way that they're productive, safe, and, you know, they're able to work with materials, do programming that we can present online, that sort of thing. So I have confidence that there are things that we can do. And I have confidence that, you know, ours is a great staff and we will make them work. My biggest fear right now is how we manage physically moving people around the building, if we're told that's okay. It's one thing to say to somebody, you know, our building is safe and clean. But as soon as you have 30 people in the building who want to look at books and use the computer and browse DVDs and ask a librarian questions, then it starts getting really tricky.
So one of the, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I, you know, I, I'm very confident that our patrons want to be with us and want to be with us safely and enjoying our services and our assistance. And I expect that they'll be very cooperative. And that we'll find some really creative ways to help them. The unknown is the scariest thing. The, you know, just not knowing what the rules are going to be. And yeah.
And I think, I think what we're looking at right now, and I think the way it's going to have to be, probably by govern, governor order, is a phased approach. So I expect that at some point in time, we'll be given guidance from the government that says you can have a certain number of your employees in the building, but maybe not the public. So there's probably going to be a period of time when we bring back to the building a certain percentage of employees. We get things ready for social distancing, for providing services with social distancing. Most likely at that point, we can restart curbside pickup. That's a pretty easy thing to do and very popular. And continue, of course, our, our remote programs. Programming is the really big, so many big things. Programming is one of the really big things that I do not think we're going to be able to bring back as it was before this right away. We've been doing pretty well with our digital programs. And I think that we can work to provide more. I think that we're going to have to continue with our digital programming for a good portion of our programming, because social distancing with a concert or a meeting or story time, I think is going to be pretty much impossible. You know, we've also talked about maybe doing outside story times with little mats that are spaced apart. But we have to be very creative about how we provide the service that we've always provided in person in a room. The other big consideration is we have staff members who most likely will be asked to return to work while their children are home with no school and no daycare or camp. So, you know, one of the things that we were talking about for maintaining social distancing with the staff, and also maintaining lower numbers of people in the building, is continuing a partial work from home for some of the staff who can easily do that. And that may have to continue for a period of time by necessity. What we've learned is that many of our staff are very, they are able to work from home very well. It's that work is different, but it's productive and, and good work. And so I think we're, we're going to have to be, again, creative about how we approach that. There, I, I think one of the big things that we talked about is the possibility or the potential of not allowing groups to meet in the building for a period of time. Because, again, just like with the programming, having, you know, a, a meeting of the condo board with 50 people is not going to be viable for, until sometime in the future when we, when we're in the, in the clear. So I think that there are going to be policy implications to many of these things, including outside groups using the building, including, you know, turning people away at the building, whether there's some sort of limit of how many people can be, be in the building, or if somebody comes up to the library and there's coughing and sweating from a fever and they want to come in and use a computer, we need to be able to ask them to leave. So there's, there's a lot that we're thinking about. And that doesn't even cover most of it. We have small teams working on various pieces of these, these problems. But as we start, I think, I think as we start getting more guidance from the governor's office, we'll have a better idea of what this will look like going forward. But I, I think it's, you know, based on what the governor just came out with, it seems like it's going to be a very staged, step by step approach. And we're not going to be planning out into the future, weeks and weeks, we're probably going to be planning out for two weeks. And then, you know, a new guiding, a guideline will come down.
And would you guess that, given the potential for a staged, how would you put it, reentry, that if you had a notice today that May 15th, hypothetically, I mean, not that the week that is, would be the day to reopen, that that would be enough leave time? 10 or 15 days or two weeks would be enough leave time to have the staff ready, have all these decisions made?
To, to open to the public? I'm not sure. We have a lot of logistical things that have to happen in our building before we can allow the public to come back in our building. So we don't want, we don't want the public coming into our building and asking for services when we don't have those barriers up at the desks to protect them and the staff as well.
And these are the topics you're discussing at the Directors Association meetings?
Yep. At the, we had, last week, we had three meetings with other library directors of similar size libraries. So the large library directors all got together, the medium sized libraries and the small libraries. And we started those discussions at the PLDA meeting on Thursday, this Thursday. We're going to be continuing those discussions. And we've asked WLS to put together, oh, what's the word I wanted, like authoritative best practices, based on actual recommendations from departments of health or, you know, others who are not making guesses like we're making guesses, especially in the realm of things like materials handling and, and best practices for that.
Has there been any input from WLS yet? Or?
Well, WLS put together the meeting. Well, WLS put together the meetings for us of the small, medium and large libraries. They were going to compile all of the notes, we haven't seen them yet. And I'm going to be reaching out to Terry tomorrow to have a conversation, to sort of direct the conversation that we're going to have at the PLDA on Thursday.
Any other questions?
At the state level, is, has the library, I guess it's Department of Library Services or is it the Department of Education? Who will be?
It's the department, the Division of Library Development, which falls under the State Ed Department. Unfortunately, we have gotten no guidance from them at all, though I did reach out to Ray Sanchez today for contact. Apparently the deputy, the governor's deputy, something to the Department of Education, I can't remember his full title, seems to be very responsive to downstate issues with the schools. And the recommendation was that, from actually Craig Olivo, was that he may be a good person to sort of get the ear of and say, what, you know, public libraries have these major issues, we need some guidance from the State Ed Department because lots is coming down for the schools, but nothing is coming down from us. One of the big things that we're going to have to contend with is what do we do when the library, the public library opens again to the public and the schools are closed? My, the greatest fear I have, as much as I love to see all of those middle schoolers in the building, you know, hanging out in the library, not hanging out elsewhere, that's going to be unmanageable. If, if we're still under, you know, if there's still threats, if we're still trying to maintain social distancing, we simply can't do that. So that is a potential policy decision that I'll need from the board is what do we do about that? Do we, do we limit unaccompanied children under a certain age or restrict them? Is that possible? Those are conversations that we're going to have to have.
Normal is different.
Yeah.
It's a new normal.
Totally.
So everyone is going to anticipate that, right? I don't think anyone will be surprised by that and unaccompanied kids have always been an issue. Right? But now in this COVID reality, that's something that we're going to have to really take seriously.
Right.
Right? And I was on the same phone call as Karen was and everyone pretty much deferred to the schools because and, and there's definitely a sense that the schools are not going to open by the end of the year. The governor was pretty clear today that May 15th may be lifted upstate, but not down in these years. So Karen, you had said that you were gonna look for something on the State Ed Department related to libraries?
Yeah, that's the contact that I need to get. If I can get the ear of that individual, I think I might have a fighting chance at getting somebody from the state to pay attention to us.
Well, is WLS not doing anything still?
Well, they're, they're not doing as much as they should be, that, in that, that's my opinion. You know, they have reached out to the state librarian and the, the people up at DLD and they don't get anything, and he doesn't get anything from them. And I'm sure he doesn't because I've reached out to DLD and the state librarian in regards to our security camera grant and I've gotten no help from them. So in that respect, I don't think that that's WLS's fault. I think that that's a defect in our, our state agency that governs libraries.
Well, I think that the socially distanced summer, we can't even surmise what it's going to be. And, you know, the village, it seems, is anticipating no camp, right? And, you know, the thought of kids and families in this community struggling through, through a summer with, you know, no activities is a struggle. And I think the community is going to have to come up with some ideas of drive-in type movies and, you know, whatever. But we can't really plan, I think, until further down the road and towards the end of May to even figure this out because we just don't, it's so uncertain.
Well, I think we, what we're focusing on right now are the things that we can plan for.
Of course, of course. And you, you'll probably get staff back in.
Right.
At some point in May, perhaps.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, towards the end of May, maybe.
And that's definitely our first step in terms of, you know, what kind of physical adjustments we might have to make to the building. The idea is that, you know, we bring in things that we use with the staff. And in some ways, then we learn how effective those things are or what kind of obstacles they present. And, you know, a, the big sheet of Plexiglas sounds great until, you know, I was up there measuring things and trying to position things and asking myself questions like if I'm carrying six books and a baby and, you know, there's no counter space because there's a barrier right at the edge of the counter, well, what does, you know, what happens?
Yeah.
And they seem like small things, but they're not. They're, they're going to really impact not just the patron, but the workflow of the situation. So it's nice that it's going to be rolled out slowly because it's going to, you know, no amount of pre-planning would let us hit the ground running. We, we have to do this step by step.
Yeah, and the children's room dynamic and the teen room dynamic.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's, it's gonna, but, but, you know, until you get all your department heads in and try and sort of look at it. But I do agree, we need to figure out, we need to plan something. But it's hard to know if we'll really be having the public in the building.
Right. One of the things that we have been discussing is opening the building and sort of in stages so that we can better control people. And one of the things that Molly is working on is can we open at the, you know, at the very beginning, when we first are opening to the public, is it possible for us to open just the circulation desk and the lower level? And we can provide circulation services from the circulation desk and other very limited services from the lower level. But that allows us to sort of control where people are in the building and it keeps people from congregating. You know, that's one of the possibilities that we're trying to sort of work through.
And we're also working.
With the exception of the children's books, all the books are upstairs.
And our staff get that for people.
Yeah, it would basically be a, you know, we would converse with people and then a runner would go upstairs and get the physical material.
It would be like being back in a college library.
Yes, yes.
Maybe they can order the books.
The other thing we're working on is a, a poll so that we, we have an opportunity to get feedback from patrons about what services are most critical to them, what are the things they're looking for? So that we, you know, we can prioritize things based on what their needs and interests are versus, you know, what are the things that are easiest for us to figure out? If we have to put more of our attention into say, how can we assist people who need some sort of help on a computer? And what is that help? Is it, you know, applying for unemployment is? But unless we have their feedback, we may find ourselves planning for things that really aren't prioritized, so.
Are you getting calls, by the way, on the, on the Zoom phones or whatever you call them?
Yes, yes, we are. A lot of the calls have to do with, you know, people's, people need help using the digital resources. So the staff will walk them through it or, you know, there could be something on their library card that's preventing them to access the digital resources. They've been issuing library cards to people over the phone and at a later date will mail those cards out to people. They've been answering questions about the digital programs that we've been giving and they've been doing some referrals as well.
And Molly, you were talking about unemployment. Are we getting, have we been helping people with that kind of stuff?
We haven't been. I don't know what kind of questions are going directly to adult services, the adult services department, but we can find out from Diana.
Yeah, they've been keeping track of all of the questions that they're getting.
It would be interesting to see.
Yeah.
It's, I, I certainly expect that to grow. And even over the next, you know, year or two, that that's going to be an area of service where we find a lot of demand.
And is there a lot of, like, have policies been set about disinfecting books and stuff like that?
There are finally some recommended.
Guidelines?
Yeah, coming down from the national level. So we've been, we've been going over those together. WLS has been going through them because there is the delivery service to be considered. And how are, and how are you going to deal with safe materials handling with a delivery service? I think one of the things that is going to happen, or, or I should say is going to not happen, is the delivery service at the very beginning. I have a feeling that that's going to be phased in as well, but that decision hasn't been made yet.
This is the kind of situation that can keep you up at night.
Oh, it sure can.
But I, I hope that you can find some rest in all of this. And I, I don't, I can't imagine, but is there anything as trustees we can do? We don't have the expertise, obviously, but is there any research or, I can't imagine how we can augment what you're doing.
Well, I think what might be helpful, and you tell me if you think this is reasonable, is because a lot of these things have to do with, because some of these things have to do with policy considerations. Amanda, I think you had, I think it was your suggestion that we have a policy committee meeting. And I think that it might be a good idea to commit, to come up with like a, a very general pandemic policy, part two. Because we've missed part one.
General pandemic policy, Amanda. That sounds so easy, doesn't it?
Yeah. And, but basically what I, what I.
I'm pointing to you down there, Amanda, that's your problem.
What I need to, what we need to do. What we need to do is to be able to sort of override some of the current policies with an overriding pandemic plan or policy that gives the library room to create restrictions or, you know, levels of service where, in order to react to the different, you know, the guidelines coming down from the government.
Is there any general override that, because I can't imagine how you would write that, Karen?
So a couple of libraries have something already. I shared something with someone, I can't remember who I shared it with. I think I might have shared it with our, our reentry committee. There are a couple that are, they're very general. And some of them are more specific, but part of the problem is you don't want to get too specific because you're never quite sure. You, you have to be able to respond sort of flexibly, flexibly to some of these things.
Well, we should do that as soon as possible.
I would say so. So my suggestion is that we, that Amanda, we set a policy committee meeting date and I can pull together the ones that I've found and we can take a look at those.
And we need to pass them ASAP to give you the ability to move forward.
Right. We're moving forward. If you have a number of different policies, I mean, I'll offer to look, maybe to organize them somewhat.
Okay.
For the committee meeting.
Sure.
So we can all look at them and see what they're, where they're similar and what we might want to pick and choose from the different ones.
Okay.
I just have a general question about that for pre-planning. Would it be appropriate for us to have, tap into whatever local resources we have, like open door, just to get status updates on what the trends are in the Austin client area for positive cases? Positive tests, rather.
So Alice and I are on weekly meetings with a group of community leaders and open doors represented there. So we're getting those numbers weekly. And then Dana Levinberg has been sending me, they're not Austin specific, but their county numbers and county recommendations. She's on a conference call. I don't know if it's every day, I think it's like three times a week with the county executive's office. And so I get, she sends me those.
And I, I will say, I'm, I'm, am I muted? No, I'm, okay. So I will say that I get the updates from our medical director and, you know, just so you know, in terms of the open door, we're testing at like above a 40% positive rate. And we have leveled off in terms of the, the case finding. I'm just looking at a new memo that I just got in. So we seem to have hit our peak and are on the decline in terms of the positives now. So that is good news. But I was just speaking with Shanti earlier today. We have a large number of cases in Austin. And Karen, do you have access? Because I can't, I was just Googling, I was talking to Shanti before. I can't seem to find that stuff, Shanti, maybe you're better at research than I am.
Yeah, I Googled the, the county, the county executive page and that's where the, the numbers are every day.
Okay. So, but with regard to the open door, they are doing, what did they call that? What was that word again, Shanti?
Contact.
Shanti, contact, contact tracing. I'm sorry, Shanti is my boss, contact tracing. And they are trying to reach out to places which have a number of cases to do more effective public health education. But we have a lot of spaces with very dense housing. And there's a lot of illness in our community right now. So it, it's a problem. And that's why, I mean, I think that's definitely one of the reasons why we won't be seeing the schools open either because we're really linked to the New York, to the New York City area.
Likewise, I don't think the library, I, I'm very concerned because when I see the village numbers going up and up and up and they're, you know, and then you see the picture from the rest of the state or New York City where, you know, there's been a decline and there's not a decline here. And so rather than having to restrict someone because, you know, just the idea of trying to physically control people just doesn't sound like something that the library should even get into. But, or, you know, that people shouldn't be responsible for that. You know, I, I honestly think it's going to be longer because when you try to, you know, I'm just saying as a layperson, get information, call the Department of Health, if you call the Westchester County Department of Health, it's forwarded to the state. What is that saying? So the village and the town, there has been no public meeting to discuss with, with residents or people here what's going on and what's being done about it. So, you know, I, I just don't think that the library should, you know, put workers at risk when right now the cases are on the incline.
Yeah, that's definitely important information for us to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, Shanti, I don't, I don't, maybe you could send me the link because I'm very curious to be able to see cases within our community. I, I can't seem to find where you're getting your, getting that. So I look forward to seeing it.
Any other comments or questions on the topic?
Just going back to the policy committee, would we like to set a date for coming together? And then in the meantime, Karen, you can send me the information, I'll organize it for all of us. Yeah. But is a week from tonight good?
Sounds good.
Yes.
It'd be, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. And I can set up another meeting, you know, a Zoom.
All right. Getting good at it?
Yeah, I am.
So we'll move on to the final topic on the new business, the network, Wi-Fi and internet services and support. It comes with. It comes with two resolutions regarding the approval of contracts. One for network and Wi-Fi equipment and installation, and the second for Internet service. So Karen, I'll ask you to take it away.
Sure. So as you, and I, I apologize again for sending this to you at the last minute. My timing was all wrong with the grant. My, but the next phase of my grant application is to file what they call Form 471. And Form 470, and it's due on Wednesday. I'm doing it tomorrow. Form 471 is where you, you award, you actually award the contract or you formally accept the contract from the companies who you've chosen. I thought it was you gather all the contracts and you submit them all and then you approve them at a later date. But no, I was very wrong about that. But in any case, I had everything together that I needed. I was waiting on some answers for the network equipment one, which I'll, I'll, I'll speak to. So this, of course, is the next phase of our getting a little bit more independent from WLS as far as technology. We've been planning this for some time. We're planning on setting up a parallel network right now. So we would still have the WLS network with, excuse me, computers running on it. But we would also have our own network coming into the building, which we would slowly, as we, as we get used to it, as we learn and as we get funding, move more and more of our own equipment onto the new network. In order to facilitate that, we need a trunk coming into the building, a separate trunk from the WLS one. And we also need the networking equipment to actually be the bones of the network, which is the firewall, the switch, you know, various UPS, various other pieces of equipment and software. In addition to that, we are going to be dropping WLS, the WLS Wi-Fi in 2021. And as part of this, we're also installing our own Wi-Fi with the same number of access points as we have ended up with WLS. But hopefully with a little bit better service for our patrons because Wi-Fi has been a point of complaint for many of our patrons. So the, so those are the, the two things that are, three things really that we're working on right now. The two companies who I was down to with the, the network and Wi-Fi equipment is now down to one company. I was able to get the answers to the questions that I had this morning. And the major question I had was, first of all, the two companies are the Network Support Company, which is the company who we're currently working with more on a consulting basis right now. And the other company is Turnkey Technologies. Both companies are, you know, they have good, good recommendations, highly regarded, large companies, lots of clientele. So I don't have any concerns about that. And we've been working with the Network Support Company since, I think it was August when we, we signed a contract with them. The question that I had was, the Network Support Company had given me the cost of the equipment and Turnkey Technologies had given me the cost of the equipment and the cost to support, update and maintain that equipment. So I needed from TNSC what the support would be. And we currently have a contract with TNSC for $7,920, which is a certain number of hours over the course of a year. I spoke to Bill Starbuck at TNSC and he said that that's more than sufficient to maintain a network like this. We have not used a lot of the hours this year that we paid for because like I said, we're only using them as a, in a consulting capacity. And so all of those hours that we save from this year can roll over into the next year's contract. So we'll have even more to work with. So it's my recommendation that we go with the Network Support Company for the equipment, the equipment and installation. And then, does anybody have any questions about that piece of it?
The way the resolution number 50 is worded, it's an either/or.
Yes, that's because when I wrote, when we sent out the agenda, I didn't have the answer to the service part of the question. And that might have skewed the numbers to suggest that we should choose the other company.
Okay.
So now I was able to get that information this morning.
Okay.
When do we need to make this approval?
Tonight.
And you, do you have either, any other libraries that have used these folks to the extent that we're about to embark on or?
Yes. So for the Network Support Company, Chappaqua has been using them for many years and is happy with them. I've been working closely with Mary Kane, the Director of the Katona Library, because she's doing something similar. And I believe that she is probably going to be going with them as well. We both are having our board meetings tonight to make those decisions, but she was leaning towards them.
Can I just ask, I have Firstlight, TTI and Turnkey Technologies and you call it Firstlight, but then you call it network, I don't, I'm confused. What is network support?
The Network Support Company is.
Yeah, which one is that?
That, let's see, which one?
I thought it was Firstlight. Why don't we call it Firstlight?
Because Firstlight is something different. Firstlight is the internet connectivity coming into the building.
Oh, I see, I see. We're on resolution 50 and not 51.
Correct. So I can go on and speak about the Firstlight if you'd like.
No, what I'm confused about is, do we have information about Network Support Company? Where is that information? Do we have a? Are you, you're, you're saying that is the current company that we utilize already?
And you should have their proposal as part of your packet. I just brought it up in Kathy's email. It's.
Well, I printed everything out and I don't see it. Maybe I stapled it to the wrong thing.
Yeah, it's got like a bird.
It's just that it's $15,000 and I do have a lot of questions about health effects of Wi-Fi and all of that. But I also feel like ordinarily, we would have perhaps a company come in and talk to us so we could talk to them or maybe not. Maybe we've never done that before. I'm really concerned about 5G. So do you have any information about that? Are they going to be installing 5G into our building?
I don't think they're installing 5G into our building.
Okay, but you're sure of that?
I don't, I'm not going to.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't think so. We didn't discuss that.
Okay.
5G isn't a hit or miss, it's not a one-shot deal. 5G is being rolled out around the world and if it's.
Yes, but here's the thing, we've, we've been avoiding it on our house for about a year and a half, maybe two years, because Con has been wanting to install smart meters on our house. And after I've done all the reading, the health effects are very real and very dangerous. And so I don't know about any of these companies. I don't know if they even are concerned about health effects. But there are serious hea- health effects, so.
But I don't.
I mean, I suppose if it's just the similar, the similar wiring that we have now and it's sort of a, a typical Wi-Fi thing, we can deal with discussions about health effects. I've been reluctant to bring this up because I always feel like I'm the outlier when I mention anything about health effects. So I don't know. I mean, I'm probably going to abstain just simply because I've read through this stuff and I'm not really sure, you know, what discussion we're having, if we're just rubber stamping what you are telling us to. You're saying, let's just do this. Let's give the contract. And yet, we've only had this since Friday?
Yes.
Information?
You have.
If everyone else is, is completely confident with this, they can go ahead and vote for it, but.
One of the things that I think is an advantage to changing is, I think we're actually going to have a lot more control over the kind of service we're bringing into the building than we currently do with WLS because WLS makes a decision for everyone. Am I right, Karen?
Yes.
That's just the service contract, though. That's not the actual equipment or the software or anything. Those are the questions I have. It's not the surface contract, which is what we're dealing with here, but it's actually what they're installing. Can you simply ask them if they're going to be installing 3G or 4G or 5G?
I can.
Just ask them that?
Certainly ask them.
Okay.
I will say, and like I said, I, I very much apologize. I hate dumping last minute decisions on you and this was completely my fault. I totally lost the timing. This, this, this decision only has to be made tonight if you would like me to continue to, to file for E-Rate. So E-Rate allows us about 80% reimbursement for the costs of the equipment and the broadband. So the costs that you see, with the exception of the service, the costs that you see are either discountable or reimbursable by 80%. Now, if we need more time to make this decision, that's fine. But then we, if we do want to benefit from that E-Rate funding, we have to wait until next year to do it.
Any other questions? Any other comments at this time?
Karen, I, I'm sorry. I understand. This is the company that we, you introduced us to last year, right? So we went through the business of really, I guess, understanding who they are, what they can do. And you've liked working with them over the course of this year.
Yes, and, and we have worked very successfully with other libraries who I've been in contact with.
Okay, that's, that's good.
So the resolution is one or another company. It's not saying which company?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we change that resolution now that I have, or change the wording slightly now that I have the answer that I need for resolution 50, that we actually do in fact award the contract to the Network Support Company.
And that's the current company we use right now?
Correct.
So I guess my vote would be contingent on what kind of installation they're going to be doing. It says for network equipment and installation of network and Wi-Fi company.
Right.
There's no specification on the document that you provided regarding those details.
That's what I'd like to know.
The sentiment captures what we've been trying to do for the last year or so since the problems with WLS began. I feel that you have at least a working relationship with these folks and confident enough that we should go further with them and pursue this path. Ultimately, I think that the equipment and/or the service can be modified down the road. And I'd be comfortable with voting on it tonight. Any other comments or questions at this time?
I concur.
Could, could you just send us the contract then that we have currently with Network? Is it going to be upgraded or changed at all?
Right now, right now, we're going to leave it as it is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you had approved that. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, we did last year. I remember.
I want to say sometime in August, but I can resend it to you. Bill just sent it to me again. The, the feeling is that we're going to leave that as it is. And then if we feel that we do need more hours as part of that contract, then we can revisit it. But, but it was Bill's feeling that that contract would more than suffice what's needed to maintain this network.
Do they specify at all the kinds of equipment and software and everything? Or they just, we just give them carte blanche?
I don't know. So if you see, if you look at the proposal, and I apologize that you don't have it in front of you, but it was in the packet that Kathy sent.
She sent it on Friday?
Uh huh. The name of the document, as I look at it in the email, is E1Network_SU. And then when you pull it up, it lists out all of the equipment that they're proposing.
Well, I got Turnkey and I got PAVTAC, Pavilion Technical Assistance Center, and the other one. I didn't get anything that said Network Support Company. Firstlight.
Yeah, Firstlight is the next resolution. They're the internet service provider, but it was, that was part of the packet.
I printed everything out that I got, so I'll have to go back and look. Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
So if, if I can read the modified resolution number 50, approval of the contract award for network and Wi-Fi equipment installation. Resolve that the Board of Trustees agrees to allow the Director to award the contract for network and Wi-Fi equipment installation of network and Wi-Fi equipment to the Network Support Company, parentheses, $15,150.5, equipment installation only, no support, and parentheses. A contract subject to the rules of the E-Rate program by the FCC and USAC will be issued by the Austin Public Library on or after July 1, 2020 and will be contingent upon the appropriation of funds and/or E-Rate funding. If that's acceptable, Karen and/or Kathy, I'll ask if there are any questions. If not, we'll proceed to a verbal vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any abstentions or objections, please indicate by saying aye or nay, I suppose. Nay. So who sent any abstentions at this time or?
Well, my concern is still that they don't say, from what you're telling us, what kind of equipment or software they're going to be utilizing.
That was in the proposal.
Okay. So this motion carries and we're going to ask Karen after she gets the, the grant done tomorrow, if she could ask Kathy to send us the supporting documentation.
Yes.
So at this point, we can move on to the topic of resolution 51, the Internet Service Award.
So this is, again, like I said, the broadband coming into the building. I wrote the grant for 300 meg service, which is what we currently get through WLS. And the idea is that that's a starting place. I had wanted to do a one-year contract, but that's financially not, the, the pricing for one-year contracts per month is ridiculous. So I, I'm recommending a two-year contract, which gives us the better pricing, but also a, a chance at year two if we would like to. Well, first of all, if we don't like the company, we can look elsewhere. But also, the bigger concern for me is we may find ourselves wanting to get more bandwidth and write an E-Rate grant for more bandwidth. Unfortunately, the grant is very specific. And if you write for 300, you got to take 300. Firstlight is a very well-known company. They serve a lot of clients like AT&amp;T and I'm trying to remember the, the list of clients that they sent me. I think some of it was in the proposal that I sent you, the background of the company. Up time of 99.999%, something like that. And, and they were the, they were the lowest bid. Well, I should say they were the lowest responsible bid. I got others.
Did any of these walk through our building at all or is that not necessary?
Um, they did.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, so Turnkey Technologies walked through, mostly the equipment people that, the internet broadband people do not need to walk through the, the building. But three to four companies, well, TNSC has been in our building and has already done a walkthrough with the Network Support Company. But also the, not thinking, Akeville came, a company called Akeville, but I, I wasn't happy with their reputation or their, they seemed like a fly-by-night company. Turnkey Technologies did a walkthrough and another company called Computer Support, I think it's called Computer Support Systems, did a walkthrough.
Well, of all the libraries in the Westchester Library System, I remember you were saying that Chappaqua has their own provider, right? Who do they use?
They use the Network Support Company, which is the, the company that we're going to be using.
Yeah.
And then as far as broadband, Chappaqua just uses like Optimum or something like that.
Okay.
But they have a much smaller, you know, onsite usage than we do. I, you know, we really can't go with a business residential product. We really need something a little bit more robust.
Right. Okay. So is, is this used by other libraries? It says they're based in Albany, so I would assume other libraries in the state use it?
In the state, yes, but not in Westchester. But they do extend down to Westchester. I mean, their, their, their clients extend down to Westchester.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, if not, then we'll proceed to a vote on resolution 51, approval of contract award for Internet service. Resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the awarding of the contract for 300 by 300 MBPS Internet service to two years, the Firstlight, for $959 per month. A contract subject to the rules of the E-Rate program by the FCC and USAC will be issued by the Austin Public Library on or after July 1, 2020. It will be contingent upon appropriation of funds. will be issued by the Austin Public Library on or after July 1, 2020. It will be contingent upon appropriation of funds and/or E-rate funding. Entertain a motion to vote on this topic?
Just a quick question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, 300 by 300 MBPS. What is that?
That's, that's the bandwidth, actually.
And that's for a commercial?
Yes. So currently, currently that's what we have from WLS. And since we're not moving our entire network onto it, I think we'll be fine with it for right now.
All right.
Entertain a motion. And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any ayes or abstentions at this time? And the ayes have it? Is there anything else anyone would like to bring up for a discussion or a question?
I do just want to go back to our prior, whatever you call it. I, I do have to say, having sat on the school board through the whole print sprint, cell tower crisis. Any of you guys remember that? So just, just Lucinda remembers it? Nobody else remembers it?
Only remotely.
Okay. So, you know, we just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is
well, quote unquote. What we're bringing in the building is nothing different than what, than what we already have coming in the building. It's just more of it. You know, the same thing side by side.
Okay, no problem.
Very good. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, making the effort. And policy, the policy committee will be meeting next Monday night. And Kathy and Karen and Molly, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn at this time in a second?
So moved.
And we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Stay well, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.